Well, good evening, everyone. It is December tenth, Tuesday, December tenth. It's seven o'clock and we're in the council chambers at, in the city of Platteville. And I'm calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call.
Barbara Stockhausen is excused. Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein is excused. Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Moving right along, we have our consent agenda, consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have the council minutes from November twelfth, then from November twenty-sixth. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for November. I have no appointments tonight to boards or commissions. Licenses were listed in your packet, I believe. Sorry about that. It's the beauty of computers. We had one and two of your operator licenses and taxi driver and driver's licenses, taxi vehicle and driver's licenses. And then we have Resolution nineteen twenty-one, appointing election inspectors for the twenty twenty-one election cycle.
I move to approve all items listed under the consent calendar.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Eileen to move to approve the items on the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I have one person who has requested to speak during this time period. So we'll call on Mr. Ben Belkey from UW Platteville's student body.
Ben Belkey, eight hundred South Chestnut Street. So again, this is another update. Been doing them this whole time, hopefully to continue to do them. If you notice, very short, not a lot of things happening. Finals week. So this is the week before finals week, so a lot of students are in their rooms right now studying away. Soon I will be too. Finals actually takes place next week, meaning that the end of the semester is December twenty-second, so the majority of students will probably be leaving to go home at that time. And then January twenty-seventh is our start date on spring classes, so you can expect us back the weekend before, before that starts again. Also commencement, commencement starts December fourteenth, which is just, which is this week. And the last thing is Regent Teeterman, he's coming to campus on Thursday. So we're looking forward to have him come to campus. Other than that, are there any questions?
No, we just wish you good luck on your finals.
I'll need it.
You and everybody else.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Any other citizens' comments, observations, or petitions? Otherwise, I believe we have a special guest in the audience tonight who's completing requirements for a Boy Scout badge or, so if you want to come up and introduce yourself, you can.
Hi, my name is Ethan Imobersteg. I am from Troop Eighty-four, Platteville, Wisconsin. I'm doing this to finish up a Eagle Scout merit badge for my Eagle requirement, so.
Welcome, and we hope to see you wearing that Eagle badge.
Thank you.
Great. All right, any other citizens' comments, observations, or petitions? I would mention that this past week on Friday, our finance and water and sewer people moved from their former quarters into the remodeled quarters downstairs in City Hall. I think I was there before they moved, I was there after they moved, I've been to their old quarters. It looks like they've done a fabulous job. I'm sure they're still tucking things away in their new quarters. This week on Friday, they are hosting an open house from?
Nine until three.
Nine until three, and I bet there'll even be cookies.
I think there'll be refreshments, yes.
Yeah, so if you have, you know, it's a good day to stop in and, and see what I think is fabulous work in terms of historic, I wouldn't say historic preservation, but certainly a good example of how a historic building can be remodeled and reused and preserve the wonderful characteristics.
Yes.
So, that's Friday. All right, let's go on to report, if there are no other citizens' comments, observations, or petitions, we'll go on to reports. The first in the packet was the library board report. Robin isn't here. Airport commission, I have really nothing to report except that we are pumping fuel at the airport, and that's a good thing. So our fuel farm, we are pumping fuel, I won't say that it's not without challenge. Water and sewer financial report is in the packet, the airport financial report, and the department progress reports. Anybody with any questions on any of those? Otherwise, we'll move right into the action items, the first of which is a budget amendment for transfer of city manager contingency funds for Legion Park Events Center utility costs.
So as we talked about at the last meeting, as part of the preparation for the Legion Park Events Center, the city agreed to cover the cost of bringing water, sewer, gas, and electricity to within five feet of the building footprint. And the cost of utilities inside that footprint would be the responsibility of the committee, the Legion Park Events Center Committee. The cost of installing the water and sewer service is covered by the water sewer utility budget. Installing electricity and gas to the boundary is covered by the city manager contingency funds, but will be charged to the park's outlay account. And so this is a request to transfer those contingency funds to the park's outlay account to cover the cost. And attached to the staff note is the request for budget transfer.
There are no questions, are we ready for some action?
I move to approve budget amendment four, to transfer eight thousand nine hundred one dollars and seventy cents from the twenty nineteen city manager contingency budget to the twenty nineteen parks' outlay budget.
Seconded up.
We have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to approve a motion to make this budget amendment and transfer said monies from the city manager contingency budget to the parks' outlay budget. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a request, or is state, a request to file for a state mandate waiver of the housing affordability report. Joe?
Yes.
And we, I would mention, we have not heard this information before.
Right, and the reason is because there's a deadline for filing this request, because the report is supposed to be done by January first, twenty twenty, and since we're only having one meeting this week, we kind of had to combine it with one information and action together. So what this is about, the state passed a law that says all municipalities over ten thousand population have to file a housing affordability report. And actually, there's another report that has to be filed, but that one's a little bit more straightforward. But the report has to be done by January first, twenty twenty. When you look at the information in when they pass this law, it talks about, you know, providing information on implementation of the comprehensive plan as far as the housing actions the city is taking. But if you look at the details, what they really seem to be getting at is having communities take a look at what their procedures are, their approval process, their permits, their fees, everything related to housing, and how it impacts the development of housing as far as the time it takes and the cost of housing, how it impacts the cost of housing. Sounds pretty straightforward, but when you start looking at the actual information that they are requiring, and I included the list in the staff report, it's extremely cumbersome, and they're basically looking for this information on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And, you know, they need to know what the housing demand is, the current demand, the future housing demand, how every single regulation that has an impact on, that affects housing, how does that affect the cost of housing, and the time it takes to approve housing projects, subdivisions, the housing itself, basically everything related to it. So it's extremely time-consuming impact. So what's kind of happened is, starting with River Falls is the first community that I heard of, they applied for a waiver of the mandate request to the state, and it was approved. So the league of municipalities is kind of sending out a thing that says, hey, they got this approved, y'all might want to consider the same thing because of the time that it takes to implement this report. And as I was looking at it, comparing our rules to kind of other communities over ten thousand, it really seemed clear to me that we are, the city of Platteville is really not the target of this kind of legislation because our, our development fees are, are very low compared to most communities, larger communities. Our approval processes are very straightforward, it's basically kind of the state mandated, you know, timeline for a subdivision plat approval, for example. Plus, we have already taken significant steps to address affordable housing. We've, you know, we've assisted with a couple affordable housing projects, we did our housing feasibility study, we extended TID four to support affordable housing. We're already working with some WIDA to look at some additional incentives and projects that we can work on. So, you know, that is really seems to be the intent of the law, is to get communities to start taking steps to do that. So our argument is that it makes more sense to us, rather than spending the time to do this report, which has to be done annually, why don't we spend this time on actually doing the implementation that we're taking a look at? So that was kind of the, the argument that River Falls made, and I think we've even got a stronger case because our, our fees are significantly less than River Falls in comparison. So that's the request, is to request a waiver from that mandate to do this report. So we do have to ask a resolution to that effect. Any questions?
Questions? My understanding is if the waiver isn't granted, then we'll just need to do the report.
We'll do the, yes.
They did not establish any penalty?
Correct.
Within the statute, so that if the report isn't filed by January one and the waiver isn't granted, then we would simply need to?
Have to do it.
Go back and do the report.
Right.
Making this report has been, so because we're down one staff person in planning it all.
Right, this was on Catherine's to-do list, and then she left, so. And then I, to be totally honest, I kind of forgot about it until this info from the league of municipalities came out, and I started to scramble, and luckily they had this waiver option available.
Okay, questions of Joe? There are no questions, do I hear any action?
I move to approve Resolution nineteen twenty-two, requesting an exemption from Wisconsin statute sixty-six point one zero zero one-three, that requires the creation of a housing affordability report by January one, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Eileen, a second by Ken to approve Resolution nineteen twenty, nineteen dash twenty-two. We'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we are, we're done with action items for tonight. So the next item on our agenda tonight for information discussion is the ATV/UTV ordinance and route designation. So Doug will start with you in terms of a presentation.
It's going to be kind of a brief presentation, but an updated staff report was created incorporating some of the areas of possible consensus that seemed to arise out of the last time this topic was before the council. Some pretty extensive route designations, we tried to capture all of those in the staff report. Again, there appeared to be some consensus in the area of whether the ATV/UTV ordinance would potentially be year-round, the hours of operation, six AM to ten PM, and largely following the previous ordinance that was adopted and is now expired. But the main area of discussion appears to be about what routes, if any, would be up for discussion.
There was, the Safe Routes had requested?
I was, I was the staff member at the Safe Routes meeting. We had, we had a special meeting on December the fourth and discussed this issue, and the Safe Routes Committee, there's a draft minutes in your packet, but there, a motion passed five to one recommending that the council approve ATV/UTV routes as presented on the recommended map with option one, Ridge Avenue.
Okay, so there's a, at the end of our last council meeting, we kind of outlined some roads that we had consensus on, Lancaster Street, Adams Street to Chestnut, Chestnut all the way out to County D, certainly County B, which has been a route this past year all the way through town, east to west, Water Street, south from Main Street, which has been a route this year, to the Walgreens and corner, I guess, and then Business Highway one fifty-one is what I believe that's called, but it could be County XX, from where Chestnut intersects with it on the west side to Valley Road on the east side, and then Valley Road to East Mineral Street, East Mineral back to Broadway, and then, or County, and then Madison Street by the high school, and then that would be Water Street to Pitt, and Pitt across to North Second, and then, what's the street in front of the pool called? I don't even remember.
Sylvia.
Sylvia. And then north on Fourth Street over to Ridge. So this would expand what has been, and, and for people in the audience, I do want you to know that we did have an ordinance that allowed ATVs on many of these roads. This is adding roads. So we have had an ATV ordinance in the past. So that's, that's kind of where we were at the end of last time, that and, and you're saying that the Safe Routes Committee endorsed the map using the Ridge Avenue route?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question, quick.
Question, yeah.
So I'm trying to remember from our discussion last time, why we split Water Street?
Split Water?
Because there's, from the BP station north to Pitt, there's a route, and then from Main Street down to Walgreens, but then in between, I don't know why, we just didn't continue that instead of going down Broadway?
I think what happened there is that the, there was some suggested or recommended routes that were provided on a map in our discussion, and we, the councils had a springboard from, from that map that resulted in some additional routes being considered, including Madison Street to Mountview Park and Valley Road. But for, for whatever reason, it just didn't come up, that section of Water Street. Other than that, I don't think there's, there was any particular reason why that wasn't included.
I would agree, I think we started with Ken's map?
Yeah.
And then added from Ken's map, and I don't, I don't remember if Ken had Water Street all the way or not.
I think he did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have some people who have requested to register in favor of an ATV/UTV ordinance. They have not asked to speak, so Chad Digman has registered in favor, fifty-five eleven Heritage Lane, Platteville, he has registered in favor, and also registering in favor but not asking to speak, Jimmy Bogard?
Bogard.
Okay, Bogardla?
Bogardus.
Bogardus. Fifty-five twenty-seven British Hollow Road, Petosi. I have also a couple of people who have registered to speak against the ordinance, against having an ordinance. So we'll start with Don Francis.
Don Francis, six thirty-five North Fourth Street. Never operate on public roads. That's a direct quote from every owner's manual for an ATV or UTV. Every one of them. But we're going to bypass that because we know better. We know that it's going to be safe, it's going to be okay. Let's let this happen. Nothing bad happened the past few months, let's keep on doing it. You don't drive a dirt bike on the highway. You don't drive a minivan on a sandy beach, or a Mini Cooper on a four-wheeling trail that's muddy. But we'll do this. Or, anyway, council, I want you to do your homework, okay? You're not the first city or town to look into this, and there's lots that are going through this process because it got opened up a few years ago by the state. So you can learn from what's going on across the state, and also bordering states as well. But I, I ask you, why should we disregard the warnings? I don't see that there is some great public good to do with that, or is there safety and our welfare of our city streets if we just allow this to happen? And, and add it to more streets, so therefore it can be happening so many other places. Like the high school, to go by the, the high school. Now we're opening up the idea that a sixteen-year-old can drive an ATV to high school. Or not, just, you know, maybe they'll show up and then leave because they can now drive an ATV around. We would be now allowing, and we already are, by allowing our least experienced drivers with these vehicles that cannot handle pavement, cannot handle a road. And even the idea of having them year-round in all the conditions is ridiculous. They already cannot handle pavement. So, let's be the adults in the room. Let's be responsible for the whole city and make a responsible choice that helps everyone, not just the chosen few who decide to want to play with these things.
Thank you, Don. Christina?
So since, at the last meeting, we shared that ATV/UTVs are off-road vehicles and as such have not been designed to the safety standards warranted. We've shared that engineers design roadways to meet safety standards for the designed vehicle of which the ATV/UTV is not. Nobody has certified that public roads in the city of Platteville are safe for ATV/UTV use. So we have vehicles not designed to be driven on public streets, and we have public streets that have not been designed for ATV/UTVs. We've provided Wisconsin DNR statistics showing that in Wisconsin in two thousand seventeen, sixty-five percent of, of Wisconsin ATV/UTV fatalities occurred on public roadways. Additionally, the University of Iowa College of Medicine, Dr. Charles Genison, M.D., whose primary research area is ATV-related injury and prevention, who sent you his published research and letter, which included some of his research findings, and urged you not to open public streets to ATV/UTV use. And yet, you, council, a professional engineer, and a police chief, are still recommending putting ATVs/UTVs in our residential neighborhoods, in our parks, and in our pools, or to our pools, as a good idea, because it will bring business and access to Platteville. And you say that Lancaster, Cassville, Cuba City have had no issues, and so that it must be fine for our college town of Platteville. Yet these are not comparative cities to Platteville. Their population, our population, is two to three times greater than that, and we're a college town. And our, we have a significant population of eighteen to twenty-three-year-olds here. You think that just because those cities have had no issues, we won't either. I disagree. There's enough solid evidence in design and safety engineering and safety data that have been presented to you to prove that ATV/UTV use in our neighborhood isn't worth the risk. And your job, council and city staff, is to put the health, welfare, and safety of the public first. Camp Street is a proposed ATV route, a main route for auto, bike, and pedestrian travel between Westview Elementary, grades one through four, Platteville Middle School, grades five through eight, Platteville High School, grades nine through twelve, and some people use it to travel to Neil Wilkins, grades four K in kindergarten. On a daily basis, I see children walking to school along the road, and it's common to see whole classes of students walk from Westview to Smith Park Middle School or High School for events. The intersection of Lancaster Road and Highway eighty-one and Camp Street, and in front of Westview, is seriously busy during peak hours, especially since two additional grades have been added to Westview Elementary. I have signatures from a group of property owners along Camp Street who are against having the ATV/UTV route in our neighborhood. We've already have consistent issues with speed and loud noise. We see you walk, children walking to and from school, and adults adjoining, walking and running in our neighborhood, and we feel that adding ATV/UTV use in our neighborhood is not necessary, that it's not safe, and we don't want it. Please keep these off-road vehicles out of our Platteville neighborhoods. And when you vote on this ordinance, please put yourself in the shoes of the police officer who has to break the news to the parent or the family member of those who aren't going to be so lucky. You have an opportunity to limit the risk. Please do not put ATV/UTVs in our residential neighborhoods. Who should I give the petition to?
Thank you. And I have one additional person who's asked to speak, and that is for information purposes only, and that would be Evan Larson.
I'm going to get some papers out here. Thank you for letting us speak on this. Last time I talked, I, I, anyway, it's great to see that we're taking the time as a community to go through this. I think it's a really important thing, and the conversations we're having are really important for you to consider as you draft your resolution and move forward. It was, it's funny, I feel more engaged and civic now. Maybe we'll just start coming to meetings for fun. Like, it's, it's important to see how the city works, and it's important to recognize that we are a city. I have thought a lot about this. I find a lot of my quiet moments are thinking about like, well, what are the reasons that I feel the way I do? What are the justifications that are given? What are the justifications that are given? I was at the last council meeting, I stopped in at the special Safe Routes meeting, and I felt that there was some pretty emotional conversation and some contention in the room. But I also felt like, actually, especially after the meeting, that there were some really good conversations that came out of that, and I appreciated that opportunity to talk with people from the ATV, UTV user group, to talk with people from the Safe Routes. And I recognize that as a city, you know, our duty is for the safety. There's gonna be some compromise because you have stakeholders who have differing opinions and thoughts and feelings on this. There were a couple of things that came clear in that meeting that I thought were really important. For me, the clarity that yes, in fact, people need a driver's license to drive these on the streets. So the concern of twelve-year-olds running around on ATVs, that is not legal. I'm not saying they won't, but it's not legal, and that's not what this is about. The idea that these vehicles are not designed for streets, and that's what people keep bringing up over and over and over. And I think that that's true, and Isaac, we talked afterwards. And I sent an email to the committee after the last council meeting, like, nobody's arguing that they are actually designed for streets, because they're not. And yes, you can make them designed for streets, you can swap out the tires and things like that, but they're still high center of gravity, and if you have off-road tires, they're tippier. They're more difficult to control, and they pose risks that you would not have with other vehicles that are designed for that medium. We also agree that, yes, you have to have a certain safety training to operate these, but that training doesn't include anything about driving on streets. Unless I'm mistaken, Isaac, and this is where, like, I don't have the training, but that's not part of the, that's not part of the training, right?
As far as I'm aware, no, I think that training is outdated. I think Kurt was, is a specialist in that, he's done the other programs for stumbobilers and stuff, so.
Right.
Kind of, he's that portion of the group, so.
And so, and so I think that's, I think that's super relevant, that if you are trained how to handle, how this increases your risk if you're on a hard surface, like, I think you can drive these safely. I almost tipped a couple of times as a kid, but I didn't, and I learned. That said, I was in a rural area. I think that that learning curve is steeper when you're in a community. So, I also think that both sides are using data totally, well, it's interesting. So, in Steve Prestiguard's interview on WPR, this is when it really hit me. You know, he talked about how, you know, we've had this ordinance in place for a short year, and there have been no problems. So obviously there'll be no problems. And we've had the ordinance in the next breath for a year, and we haven't seen economic growth, but it's gonna come. And so you can't use the same amount of time to say one thing is plenty and the other's not enough. Will there be economic benefit? Yes, this is a growing industry, absolutely. Will there be potential safety issues? Yes, because people are using these vehicles, and that's just the way it is. People, our people, mistakes happen, so you need to think about that, I think. I think that's really relevant and important. We have a local and engaged club, they're full of responsible drivers, they're advocates, they're effective, and you can have conversations with them. That's not necessarily who the ordinance is for. Jim Schneller was there, Schneller was there, and, you know, I'm not worried about him ripping up and down the streets. He's gonna drive fine, but I looked at some maps and demographic information. It's funny.
You have to wait, you have to wait and go back so we can get you on.
I'll wrap this up quickly, but, so, I'm a geographer, so I made maps. And Isaac, you sent, you replied to my email, and you talked about the other communities that have adopted resolutions and opened all streets. Looking at these maps, Platteville's different. Each of these maps shows kind of the city road networks. We've got a lot more angles and corners and intersections in Platteville than the other cities. We're also larger. On the bottom right is a graph that shows you the population in the size of that circle, and the center of those dots lines up with median age. So all of these other communities are smaller with older populations, where younger and a larger population. And so I think that we're different, and we should recognize that in how we decide to take action regarding our streets. I think that we should have access on the main roads. I think it's important, it's a good way for us to engage. But I really still strongly disagree with putting them into the neighborhoods. I wanna channel these to our businesses so we get the economic benefit. That would be my priority, so, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Evan. That's all the people that I have that have requested to speak. We are not taking action on this ordinance tonight. We have, I believe, as council, come to consensus on the fact that we will have an ordinance, that it will be year-round, that specify times, six to ten, and that will basically carry the majority of the rest of the ordinance forward. I know we've had questions about the driver's licenses, we've had questions about ticketing, and these vehicles are under the auspices of DNR rather than DOT, and so penalties accrued by someone on an ATV do not accrue against a driver's license as if they would on a DOT. We have a map in front of us that gives some routes through town, expands, I would say probably almost doubles the routes that were there. I believe that when Safe Routes met, they endorsed the Ridge Avenue rather than the Camp Street route. That's, you know, I guess that's up for discussion, what the council wants to do. So I guess now, where do we stand?
So the, excuse me, so the communities that are around us that I spoke about, I just brought those up because they are the ones that are around us. But I have also looked in the communities that are our size as well. Reesburg, ninety-five twenty-two, full-time year-round population, all streets open except for two, which would be similar to like Business One fifty-one, forty miles north. Those are the only two streets that they closed down. The original ordinance was in two thousand and sixteen. Due to the issues, or should say, lack of issues, they went there. So I've also looked around the state for other communities that are our size. I just mentioned those mostly because the ones that are around us. On the limited maps, if we were to go that route, which I still would recommend and suggest to go the full C, except for the two streets that we discussed not being included. If we did do the limited ones, which was the map included in our packet, since the last meeting that we've had, I've had three business owners that have contacted me that still would not be able to be on or access that would like to be able to. The VSW, Ticket Bar and Grill, the Car Wash in Alden Street, and actually a couple of the employees, not managers, but a couple of employees at the Piggly Wiggly, and so there's been discussion that they would like to be able to be accessed as well. So if we did the current map that's on there, those four businesses are the only ones that have called, that would still be not accessed or accessible, so. And then, I did speak the wrong number at the Safe Routes meeting the other night when I said there was, I think, sixty-some residential. There's actually a hundred and thirty-nine single-family and duplexes, thirty-eight commercial properties that have residences above them. There's four large multifamilies, one hotel directly on, two hotels within a half-block. You take four of the busiest intersections in town, as well as one of probably the busiest driveways in town, being the Cook trip. And all those on the current routes, yeah, we've had no complaints of noise or speed of all those, so.
Isaac, I would contend that the Ticket and VFW do have access. I mean, it's not, I mean.
You can park and walk.
You can park and walk a block.
They would like it in front of them.
Well, we'd all like to park in front of our homes, too.
If you did add the VFW in Oak Street, that'd also open up two additional parking lots that you could use.
I have a question for you, Isaac. Did you mention Monroe as far as comparison? What, have you any comparisons to larger cities? In other words, these that were given to us from even are small cities, and so I, cities and towns, so I don't consider these to be good comparisons. The closest one that is a comparison would be Monroe, which is a population about eleven thousand, and Platteville's about twelve thousand. And so I went through about a week ago trying to find some cities around here in southern Wisconsin that might have ATVs, UTVs going through the city. So places like even Verona is smaller in size, but there's a lot of traffic around Verona. But if you go to a place like, say, Beaver Dam, that's about sixteen thousand population. So I'm trying to find comparisons to where the ATVs, UTVs go through larger cities, not the small ones. The small ones, I consider not as good comparisons. So that's one thing that comes to mind. And also Monroe, look at Monroe, Monroe, from reading what the chief has written down about Monroe. Monroe, the owners, operators of ATVs, UTVs in town can use the most direct route to get to acceptable street, designated streets. So that I get the idea that they can't drive their vehicles on city streets throughout. In other words, they can only use their vehicle to get to the most, the quickest way to the most, the nearest street. So that's Monroe. That's my interpretation of Monroe. Are there any other ones? The chief, do you know of any other ones?
Of comparable-sized cities?
That's the cities that are even larger than Platteville. If we're gonna compare small cities to Platteville, let's compare some that are a little larger than Platteville and see what they're doing as far as ATVs and UTV.
I don't have the data with me today, but we had the, previously, survey was done of a number of communities in the state. And that was when we initially had this issue before the council for consideration of the original ATV, UTV ordinance.
So I'm asking, are there any in the southern part of Wisconsin that are similar to Platteville but larger?
So for instance, Whitewater.
Not that I'm aware of.
I know Menominee doesn't allow ATVs in their downtown and university area. All their routes, if you look on the map for the city of Menominee, bypass the entire business district, downtown area, and university area. And I tried to find out why that is, but I couldn't, just with searching, I couldn't. So I don't know what their rationale is behind that, but I did notice that. And Menominee is a little bit bigger than Platteville, but still a university town as well, so a little bit of comparison there.
Another thing that struck me about this issue is what was in our packet all the way back November twelfth. And it says that ATVs, UTVs, they don't have to have turn signals. Tail lamps, only one is required. And the C headlights, only one for ATVs and two for UTVs. And it reminded me of, many years ago, when I, my mother bought us an older car, and that was in the fifties. And the first thing I did, a couple of things, I put on turn signals because I didn't want to be sticking my arm out the window and so forth, and I put in seat belts. And so I'm looking at this information here. Why aren't people using turn signals and, not necessarily seat belts, but two lights on the rear? You know, those are things that are for the safety of the people that are in the city as well. You know, if you wanna try to prevent rear-end collisions, you better have things like turn signals and complete taillights to prevent those collisions from taking place. Because in my opinion, the people that will get the worst of those collisions will likely be the people that are driving the ATVs and UTVs. Because the drivers of the other vehicles more likely have seat belts, they have airbags in the front, they might have airbags in the side. So it's for their safety, and also the safety of the people that are driving around town. So I can't see why this listing here is so outdated as far as requirement. It looks to me like something that needs to be done as far as the driver's license manual, looking at the driver's license manual, if you're gonna use city streets and other roads out in the country that people, other people drive on, I think you better be following the requirements for other vehicles. So this is outdated, it's baffling why you're using equipment that is built like this. Is it a matter of money? It costs money, I realize, to put in turn signals and so forth, but I think these vehicles should all have those items. Thank you.
Jason, do you have any other comments you'd like to make? Are you ready to, are you endorsing the routes? Are you not endorsing routes? What are your, I'm gonna go down the aisle here, so. I mean, I'd like to, I mean, we've discussed this now, this is probably the third meeting, so we need to wrap.
Want me to start first?
Sure.
As I expressed at the last council meeting, I see that Ridge Avenue, Fourth Street, and then Sylvia and Pitt Street. I had expressed my reservations about those routes, just given that they're around a lot of parks, the pool. I live on Camp Street, right on the intersection of Camp and Court, and like I said, I see a lot of kids, families, especially in the summer, frequenting that area, crossing the streets over there. So I guess I'm still, I still have hesitations in terms of that. I'd also wonder if we could switch the route from Broadway to Water Street and just make Water Street all the way connected, and then Broadway also will then, if we don't have that, that will bypass Neil Wilkins School. And I know that that's been a concern, that's been expressed by some people in the community in terms of, you know, driving past schools.
So, I'm hearing you say you don't support the proposed map.
I don't fully, I don't fully support the proposed map right here, no.
All right, Ken?
I don't support the proposed map at the present time, especially I don't like Ridge Avenue and going by schools. My proposal stayed away from schools except for Broadway, past Neil Wilkins School. As far as the police managing this, as far as control, I think a simple way to do this, if it is passed, is to provide a map to the people that are operating ATVs and UTVs, and make sure they obtain a map, and look at the map, and you should be able to tell where you can be and where you shouldn't be. And I do not support traffic on residential streets.
Ally?
And looking at the map, I think that if I were to change it, I would also not approve Camp Street, Ridge, or Sylvia. I do think, given the fact that Legion Field has so many activities going on year-round, I would like to see some access to Legion Field, so the idea perhaps of extending Water Street from Main to Legion Field, which is, whatever that.
It's Pitt Street.
So Pitt Street ending at Second, so that you would not go past any schools, you would not go past the park. But I do think that that would be one option that I would be in favor of. I'm, Lancaster Street coming in, I think is fine, Chestnut Street, I think is fine. We already have it on Main Street, we already have it on Broadway. I think even in front of Culvers and on to Valley Park Road and going back up to Broadway is, again, an area that is not residential, but it does give access to some of the stops that anyone traveling. that anyone traveling might want to make in, in the city of Platteville. So again, I would not be in favor of Ridge or Sylvia or Camp. And I would also mention that something was mentioned this evening about, well, Ken mentioned something about taillights and brake lights and all that kind of thing. And yes, it's unfortunate that ATVs don't have signal lights, from what I understand. UTVs may have them, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that. But the ordinance that was used this past year, and then some of the proposed changes, which quite frankly, except for the time and designated routes, there aren't a lot of other changes. But this is available on our website, platteville.org. So I would encourage you all to read that, because there's a lot of information in here about concerns that have been expressed, and an attempt on our part to address those concerns, like you have to have insurance if you're going to be driving one of these vehicles. Your headlights and taillights must be turned on at all times, and they must have operational brake lights. So I think we've addressed some of the issues. I can't address the fact that these vehicles were not made originally for roadways. It appears that even though that may be true, they're now on roadways. It's kind of like, in my mind, it's like an Amish buggy, it's like a tractor, it's like a bicycle. I don't believe any of those are made originally for roadways, but there they are. So we don't exclude any of them. So I'm looking at this as kind of the new motorcycle, quite honestly. I think people that used to ride motorcycles, a lot of people are buying this instead. So again, that, that's a route that I would look at.
Okay, so you would look at the routes as they're proposed?
I would not.
Except you would take out the alternate option one and option two, which would be the blue and the green? And you would also remove the piece in front of the swim, south of the swimming pool? So basically you would dead end at the end of Pitt Street?
Yes.
Okay.
When you come to Second Street, you would?
And then have connectivity from Water Street, like all the way through Water Street?
Take Water Street all the way up, through the roundabout, up to Pitt Street, turn left, go on Pitt Street, and then turn around and go back on Water Street if you wanted to leave town.
And now, what about County B, Broadway?
County B is fine with me. I still think that people will, that people will go through Main Street, up and out County B to get to that direction. And I don't see Water Street and then turn around and come back. And otherwise, they will not be able to access County B. Because if you stop them from going on Madison Street, they have no way to get to County B.
Isaac?
Well, as I've said before, I'd prefer to have all the streets open except for East Business 151 or Highway 81 south of Business 151. But if we were to do the limited routes, I'd prefer to do the maps that's shown here with the option one of Ridge Avenue.
I, I would say I concur with Isaac. I would do the maps that are shown with option one on Ridge. That's, reluctantly, I'd do that, but that would be my position. I also would point out that there has been access for ATVs and UTVs to two schools on the route that we have had. People could have access Neil Wilkins School, they actually also could have accessed the high school, because the high school parking lot, there is a high school parking lot on the east side of the building. So I, I'm, I, I have some reluctance to be going close to Westview, I believe it's very close to the street, much different than Neil Wilkins', same thing with the middle school, much closer to the street than Neil Wilkins is, which is back off the road, same thing with the high school. So I, that would be, this is going to be on for action in January, at the first meeting in January. And so I guess I need, the ordinance stands with the change in time, it stands with the change in, I, I guess I would say, I don't hear broad support for opening All Streets. And so I believe that the ordinance will include a map. At the time the ordinance is made, or comes for action, it would be possible for somebody to make a, a motion, an amendment that says, I amend the route to not include or to include other routes. Is that cor, that's correct, Doug and Nicola?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Draft, the draft ordinance could be amended at the council meeting in January.
Council meeting.
However, I think staff would like guidance as to what we.
What map to put in?
In the ordinance as a draft.
All right. Well, you don't want by the swimming pool?
Yeah, the Ridge Avenue, actually, if we were going to look at that area, I would probably, I could compromise with the Pitt Street and then dead end at Pitt Street, but then the Ridge Avenue.
Dead end at North Second Street?
Yes, and then also connect Water Street all the way through.
And you want Water Street in addition to Broadway?
Yeah, just to have that. So maybe, I guess my thinking is, if it were to divert traffic, it could divert a little bit away from the school area, and then also just kind of continues that route all the way through.
Okay, so I hear Jason saying no by the swimming pool, I hear you saying no by the swimming pool, Eileen, and Ken, I believe it's pretty much you said no by the swimming pool too. All right, so please draft a map for inclusion in the, that takes out Camp, takes out Ridge, takes out North Fourth, and takes out Sylvia, and dead ends at, at the end of Pitt Street, I guess. There is no, there is no parking lot, there is, there won't be a parking lot accessible from North Second, is that correct, Luke? As the new center is finished?
There's an option to add that, should funds be available, but right now I don't expect that to be done at this point in time.
At this point. So there is, there would be really no point in being on North Second Street because there is no parking lot to access anyway.
There will be a small piece of pavement off of there, but I don't, in terms of, I think there will be adequate parking if the ATVers are looking to access Legion Park. I think they would be better off parking off the main parking lot.
Parking on the main parking lot. Okay, so we'll dead end it at Pitt Street then. And?
Is there a chance we'd have two maps on there?
Two maps.
So do the one that you're recommending or proposing here, as well as having the one that's on here now, and then choose either of the two. But we've, can't speak how they would speak tonight, but in the past, both Eileen and Barb Sockhausen stated that they would favor the map they were looking at here, as well as I see Jason is contradicting the vote that he did the other night on the safer routes. So one night he's stating he would vote yes for this map, then tonight on this meeting, he's stating no, so.
But I, I, I guess it's okay, it would be better, I believe, Isaac, and, and you guys can disagree or whatever, it doesn't, I was thinking we would make a map, and then if you wanted to amend the map, then you would make an amend, you would say, I move to amend the map and add a connection from, that includes Ridge, North Fourth, and Sylvia, so that we have connectivity across town. So you would, you would amend it to add that route. That way, everybody starts with a base route, and, and I, I mean, the next question I was gonna ask is, do you wanna have North Water, Water Street all the way through on the map? Because that's the next thing I would ask if, if you want that included. Jason would like Water Street included north from the intersection of Main to Madison Street? That would go by the Armory?
Actually, it would be all the way up to Pitt.
Yeah, well, but the part that's not highlighted now would be from, from Main Street to, to, to the roundabout.
It's not highlighted on this map, right?
Right. Do you want, trying to, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get to some consensus.
Trying to get a consensus? Yes, I would have Water Street all the way from Main to.
Okay. So please then include on that route, Water Street, so that Water Street would start all the way by Walgreens and go all the way up to Pitt Street. So it'd be a through route in town, just like County B is a through route, Lancaster, Adams, Chestnut out is a through route, and certainly South, so I just said Water Street. And then we have gone by the majority of businesses on Business Highway 151. And so I think, from what I'm hearing, the final, there's support for this, and the, what's up in the area is the, is the Sylvia, North Fourth, and Ridge Avenue piece. And again, I think it's hard to have, do you wanna vote on this map or this map? It's better to have, I believe, a map, and then if somebody at that point wants to say, I amend the map to include the following, gets a second, you vote on the amendment, and then it would be added to the map. I think that's maybe the, it's hard to vote on two maps at the same time. Do I have consensus that we can move that way? Eileen?
Yeah, I'm trying to decide Barb whether or not waiting to amend the map is going to work, because we might have a lot of amendments, especially because we have two council members who are not here this evening. And so I'm wondering if it would be better to have two maps available for the public to look at.
So the maps would differ only in the connection across Camp and?
Right. We, we could re, you know, we could redo, we could give this map, because we've already given it as a potential. We've had comments tonight that indicate probably there's reluctance now about Ridge and Camp Sylvia.
Well, we wouldn't have Camp. Camp?
There's reluctance about using those streets, I think.
Right, and, and we just took that out of the?
Right, we took it out with the members that are here this evening. I don't know about the members that aren't here this evening, how they would feel about that. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to having this map again, and calling it Map One, and calling the other one Map Two, and then people can look at it. Otherwise, what happens is you have the map proposing.
So is this, but this is really Map One and Map Two?
Well, Map Two would be extending Water Street.
No, because right now, this is, this is a map with two options. So.
Okay, yes. No, I mean a map, literally not the options on it. So I think, yeah, I can see it both ways, because I can see that we would have five people making amendments to the, to the motion.
Well, there might be five people making amendments.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Might be a dozen people. Might have a dozen motions made to the major.
Amendments.
All right.
But I mean, otherwise, what you're asking for then is three maps. A map that includes Ridge, and doesn't include Camp.
Then if there can be language included that explains the conversation that we've had tonight, yes, then people would know what we've talked about tonight. So that we, what we ended up proposing was, you know, three of us at least seem to agree. I don't know that the other two agree.
Right.
So.
Well, I, I think it's hard to start with an ordinance that has three maps in it.
Yeah, I don't.
Do we take Map A, Map B, or Map C?
Well, the ordinance will have to be amended regardless, so.
Right.
The language in here, this one scratched up.
So this one had two options across the top. One was Ridge, one was Camp. Tonight I heard more people in favor of Ridge than in, in favor of Camp. In fact, I don't believe I heard anybody in favor of Camp.
That one could be removed.
So that should be removed.
Right.
So then, and I heard most people, probably all people, in favor of Water all the way through. So the only place that I see that there's still not necessary consensus is the route from Legion Field West. Is there gonna be a route, or will there not be a route? Doug, do you have a question over there? I see your eyebrows knit.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understand that, that Madison Street in front of the high school, as far east as Mountain View Park is still in play?
Still fine.
Okay, that's what I had a question about.
I didn't hear anybody talking about taking that out. So the only piece that I've heard anybody, any conversation about is why wasn't all of Water Street included? And the second conversation I heard was, what, is Ridge Avenue really a good idea? And is it a good idea to go in front of the swimming pool?
Would the council that is present tonight support having the draft ordinance include North Water from Main Street to Madison Street? There seemed to be consensus on that. I think it would simplify.
Yeah, we said that already.
So if the draft ordinance included, and let's, if, for simplicity for the council, if we considered the, the red marked routes, plus a red line from Main Street to Madison Street on Water, to be a base draft ordinance, with two maps provided for visibility in terms of, one that does not have the east-west routes that we've discussed tonight.
And our route that goes east and west?
Yeah, and then one that does. So we'd have two maps to look at, but the draft ordinance would have what I would describe as the base red routes with Water Street. And then based on council discussion and motions, amendments that may come up at the next meeting, those could be potentially added to the draft ordinance, but the draft ordinance would be, would have those base routes described in it.
Sure.
Does that meet with the council's approval to approach it that way?
Jason?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yep.
Isaac?
Yep.
Okay. That is how it will be then. So we have the red, we'll add one more red line on this map. Anything that's blue or green will disappear, blue or green, and the red map, the red line by Sylvia will disappear off one, that's how it'll be described, as the base.
Yes.
And the second map will show a, a route across the north side of town, east and west, that would include Sylvia, North Fourth, and Ridge.
Yes.
Yes, so the base map, as I described, I should have noted that it would not include Sylvia Street, because that seems to be a, if you like, the lowest level of, of consensus on what streets would be on the route. Okay, and then it includes access to the Camp, to Mountain View Park for camping, includes access to the parking lots on Third Street. I wouldn't even mind if it included access to the parking lot on Oak Street. Up next year, anyway?
The parking lot is going to be reconstructed.
Yeah, the parking lot's gonna be reconstructed anyway, next year, so, okay. All right. Anybody else have anything to say on ATVs and UTVs? It is a frustration for not only Jason, but me, and perhaps others, that our state continues to regulate ATVs and UTVs through the DNR, and continues to regulate other vehicles through the DOT. And that is something that we cannot change at this council level. However, it is something that we can speak with people in state government about. And so I would encourage any and all who have the same concerns that we do, and believe me, I have spoken, and I will continue to speak about it, to do that. Because, you know, as Ken has said, if the vehicles are on the road, then they should be following and having some of the same safety mechanisms as other vehicles on the road. That's, and I don't want anybody to blame an ATV or UTV user, it's not them, it's the way the regulations were set up. And so again, I would encourage you to be in contact with state officials to express your concerns, and to suggest that anything that's on the road ought to be roadworthy. All right. Next item on our agenda is the. Alright, next item on our agenda is the fee schedule.
That'd be me. I will try to make this brief because I know everybody's probably wanting to go home. Um, so every year we update our fee schedule, this is, I send information out to department heads asking them if they have any updates or things they'd like to remove or add. Um, and then I make the necessary updates within the fee schedule that I have presented to everyone up here. Um, just quickly going through paid, uh, where the changes have been made. On page three, there's been addition of a background check fee. This is something that I talked with not only the police department, but also the, um, Department of Revenue and, uh, the Department of Justice. And we are just looking to recoup, recoup some of, um, the fees, which, what is charged to us for the, just the background check fee is $7. Um, that does not include any staff time, nothing, we cannot charge beyond that based on what the Department of Revenue has told me. Um, and that's also the same amount that the Department of Justice charges.
And Candace, please note that this is for licensing.
Correct.
This is not a background check for somebody coming to work or something like that.
Correct.
So this applies only to licensing, which would be for operators licenses for beer, wine...
Taxi drivers.
Taxi drivers and those kinds of things.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so that's on page three. Uh, page seven, the fee for fire inspections has changed from $35 to $70. Uh, page eight, uh, the library request that I remove the $5 processing fee for lost items. Page nine, uh, the addition of the following has been, um, provided to me by the mu, the museum, and there was, this is, I don't know, probably one of the more significant changes. And they've kind of revamped how they're charging or doing their programs. Um, so they've got a, uh, pri, private guided tour, mine tour per person, per hour, $25. A season pass for an adult is $30, season pass for children, five to 17, it's $15. And then all programs as they are listed, as well as the facility rentals. This is something new that they've, um, implemented, they've not done this in the past. Uh, page 10, and, um, he is, okay. Um, Luke is here, he can, if you have any specific questions as to the Legion Field Park Event Center fees, as well as outdoor shelter fees, I th, I believe that he's tried to simplify a lot of this stuff and make it easier to, I guess, go through and for people to read it. Um, page 11, so previously the cemetery fees, they were, I'm not really sure why, but they were organized underneath the park and recreational fees. It made more sense, um, from an office standpoint for us to move the cemetery fees to the Public Works section, so that's what we've done. And, um, so you can find those there in the Public Works section now on page 15. But for page 11, he, uh, Luke has also cleaned up some of the diamond field court fees and to include the ball diamond practice, one fee of $50, also the update to swim lessons from, um, 43 to 45. And I don't know if that was just an error that he was trying to correct, or, um, he can speak to that a little bit more. Page 12, um, the addition of a simplified tier system, he's got tier one or tier two versus the individual sports. And page 15, once again, like I said, adding the cemetery fees there and the addition of a curb grinding fee of $10 per foot with a minimum of $100. And failure to file permit before or after the fact, $50, snow removal, uh, per parcel administration fee, $35. Ice impact, snow removal, per parcel admin fee, $35, and post-construction stormwater management permit, up to one acre, $150. Do you have any specific questions?
Tier one and tier two are defined in your book?
Uh, no, it'd give us flexibility, uh, for the most part it depends on the length of the program. Most of our summer programs are 10-plus weeks, um, so those would fall under a, a tier one, so soccer, tennis. Um, and they would be listed in our book, of course, yes. Um, I don't think many people actually go to our fee schedule to find prices. I think most people rely on the 5381 update or our website to get prices. Um, so it's just kinda, it's cleaning a lot of things up is the main purpose of this. And instead of having a $43 price tier and a $45 price tier, just kinda having a $45 price tier, um, yeah.
And then there's no per team anymore, it's just per person?
Um, there, there is a, a team listing, um, I don't know what's in your packet, but, uh, um, we do have various team listings as well. Um, so there'd be a $150 option and a $200 option. Um, and again, they're just more tiers based on the length of the season and what our actual costs are for those individual, uh, programs.
Any other questions? This will be on for action in Jan, at the January meeting. I would remind people that we don't have a second meeting in December, so the next meeting of the council will be January...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Tuesday, January 14th.
Of late, second, second Tuesday is sort of late.
Really late.
It is.
Any other questions on the fee schedule? Any other questions at all? Then I believe we're almost ready for our holiday break. We only have one item left to act on. Motion to adjourn? I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And a second, so that was Eileen and Jason. We'll vote.
Arx?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.